Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of adjustment. Chairman, can you please call this meeting to order?
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notices of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the Board's secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV, and I ask everyone with a cellphone to please mute it for the duration of this meeting. Roll call, please, Marie.
Wendy Glassman is absent this evening. Daniel Harris?
Here.
Russell Lewis is absent this evening. Jill Potter?
Here.
Natalie Passerini?
Here.
J.J. Hall?
Here.
Vice Chair Scully is absent this evening, and Chairman Avaloni.
Here. All right, just a quick housekeeping issue. If anyone's here for 11-03-0 drumming, it will not be heard tonight, and I make a motion to carry 11-03 drumming to October 14th without further notice.
I'll second.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Natalie Passerini?
Yes.
J.J. Hall? Okay, and then Chairman Avaloni.
Yes. All right, so we have one application tonight. That is 610 Fifth Avenue, Mr. Yanosey. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yeah, Yanosey, yeah.
Yanosey. I apologize. So please come up.
Thank you.
And you are Mr. Wolf?
I'm Mr. Wolf, yeah. Architect. Just kidding. I noticed the monitor is off. Can I just display?
Do you want to plug in?
No, unnecessary.
Mr. Bigman, could you please swear the man?
If you can, just raise your hand. Do you swear the firm test me about the gives the truth, the whole truth, and not the truth?
Yes.
Say your last name, please. Say your name, spelling your last, please.
Robert Yanosey, Y-A-N-O-S-E-Y.
Same, Mr. Wolf. I swear affirm the testimony about the gives the truth, the whole truth, and not the truth.
I do.
And again.
Jonathan Wolf, W-O-L-F.
Do you want me to also swear on board professionals?
Please.
Do you swear affirm the testimony about the gives the truth, the whole truth, and not the truth?
I did.
You don't have to do it now.
Don Miller, board planner.
Jerry Frieda, board engineer.
Thank you.
Excuse me, before we go any further, I just realized I shouldn't have seconded that a German am recused from that application, so if we can redo it.
Yep. So I make a motion to carry 11-03 drumming to October 14th without further notice for a second time.
Second.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
So I'm not even gonna count you.
I seconded.
Yeah, Natalie Passerini?
Yes.
And Chairman Christopher Avaloni?
Yes. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Wolf.
Sorry, my bad.
No, not at all. I have presented for the board before, so if my credentials are still acceptable, is that anything we need to go through?
Can you just go through for the record purposes and then?
Absolutely. So I'm Jonathan Wolf from Jonathan Wolf Architecture and Design in West Allenhurst, New Jersey. Been licensed for 10 or 11 years in New Jersey, also licensed in New York and New Hampshire and some other states as well. And I've testified before numerous boards in Monmouth County, up and down the shore.
Your credentials are accepted. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. So, if I may, just sort of present what we're proposing this evening.
Yeah.
Rob's here with me this evening, and Michelle's here as well, the owners. 610 Fifth Avenue is a narrow site on Fifth Avenue between Emory and Bond. It's 22 feet wide by 150 feet deep, and we are proposing an expansion of the second floor, which would expand out over the existing first floor at the same footprint. We do have, we are proposing a slight cantilever of that condition, which would increase the coverage slightly, but the footprint of the primary structure won't change. It's the same with just the addition of square footage on the second floor. The second part of the application is the expansion of the existing garage into an accessory dwelling unit with the expansion of the second floor functioning as that, that's the ADU. We're up against a tricky lot here with its 22-foot width. There are sort of some other challenges as well with the site. We share a driveway with our neighbors, which presents quite a bit of impervious coverage, which are reflected in our site plan analysis. I will sort of call out that, yeah, really, our impervious coverage is only increased by 1%, overall. We are quite over the allowable 65, but again, only an increase of 1% with this proposal. So fairly minor. Similarly, building coverage increases by a bit more, from 36 to 42, but, you know, certainly nothing that isn't sort of appropriate to the site. So, yeah, we're 372 square feet over the new garage. So again, I think, you know, in scale and sort of character with that existing garage, I've included in our application, in our submission to the board, some photos of the site, and I think sort of perhaps most telling is this larger photo from the house that shows sort of shows the rear condition, our existing one-story garage, and then some of our neighbors. We do have the neighbor who shares our driveway is also a one-story. If you see, you know, two doors down, we have what is an almost significantly large backhouse, sort of accessory structure in the back. So we're, you know, it's.
And the blue behind it, too. That's also.
Yeah, and the blue, right, that's not primary structure, right? It's also accessory. So, right, you could also point out really, yeah, just sort of a big catty corner behind us. This blue accessory structure is a full two stories. So we feel that, you know, it wouldn't stand out, sort of as inappropriate amongst those other two-story accessory structures. That is sort of what we're asking for. I'd be happy to kind of go through the variances we're requesting. Ms. Miller, can we have your report?
Sure.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot there. There's, you know, a number of impacts sort of from what we're proposing. Should we go through them briefly, just so the board is sure? I don't want to take your time unnecessarily or anything, but.
Well, to be honest, Mr. Wolf, I find it somewhat excessive, how many variances you're asking for.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
It's a lot.
It really seems excessive.
Right, right. Well, the scope, I think, is, you know, fairly modest in what we're proposing. I think it's sort of the nature of the site itself that's proving it very difficult to sort of, to do this without these multiple variances.
But that's the whole catch, right? It's a narrow lot with a big application complicating it.
Right, right. So we've discussed it, and I didn't, you know, dissuade them from sort of their initial desire to develop the site, you know, as they wanted to, and we tried to steer it in a way that would be appropriate. So this is our, you know, our first presentation to, you know.
I know I would appreciate you going through the variances, but I want to speak for the board.
Right. So I think, yeah, probably the biggest areas, you know, that we're requesting relief from have to do with the side yard conditions. It's actually, we're not changing the side yard condition associated with the primary structure. It's just for the garage itself, which currently sits closer than is allowable to the front, to the side and rear property lines. We have exposed, proposed rather an expansion of the garage footprint with an additional stair, so that's, you know, now further encroaching on that side setback.
The stairs would be located inside the dwelling?
They would be inside, but it would expand the footprint. So we widen the garage in order to accommodate that interior stair. That's currently what we're proposing.
Widening it, widen it how?
What's that?
How would it be widened?
We would add on to it, add on to that existing, you know, for the width of the stair, yeah.
If I'm looking at the garage, are you talking left or right?
I'm talking, yeah, so it would be this left side closer to that side property line, this large side property line on the site plan. It's this back sort of southeast corner. We are, so, you know, you know, a less, you know, forward proposal might not propose that expansion of the garage, but we felt that by keeping the stair out of the first floor of the garage, it would allow us to, you know, not occupy.
I think the interior space of the garage is like 10 feet or something, so we were thinking by having the stairs outside, we'd be able to keep the 10 feet of the interior space, but if we had to put the stairs inside, obviously that would take away from the interior space, but of course, yeah, we run into the side issue.
We're currently 7.5 from the side, so it's currently compliant where seven from that side setback would be allowable. It's our rear setback of the garage, which is currently only 2.8.
Don, what would that do for the setback in the side yard?
Yeah, they're, it needs to be five. They're only going to have four.
Oh, it's five, not seven. Did I? Okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
Don't I have that as a, as a accessory structure?
But I believe, right, we are?
The additional would be made to the east side of the garage, reducing the setback to four feet, or five is required.
Okay, okay. So, right, so we're encroaching by five foot, and the current existing rear encroachment wouldn't change.
Correct. Except that you're lengthening that line of where it's already too far, just like with the house. This is, you know, one of those classic, you know, flexible seat variant situations. The lot's there, the house is there, everything's already where it is. They can't do anything to change, you know, where the house is.
A lot of this is existing.
Right. And, you know, they can't, they can't move the garage to make it more conforming, and they can't move the house to make it more conforming.
But it's sort of exacerbating, exacerbating the situation.
Exactly. For the neighbors, for the sight line, for some. And we want ADUs, but we were kind of hoping they'd be on the larger lots.
Right.
And I get that, you know, it's kind of a small house.
And a small lot.
And a small lot, and they want more living area, and that's not unreasonable, but yeah.
I also have a problem with the cantilever.
Yeah. It also means, you know, having expanded.
The cantilever doesn't make it design.
Again, the flexible seat criteria, is it harming, and is there a mitigating condition that can be created? So, you know, when we've had these before, we've talked about doing things to reduce the stormwater impact, you know, is there?
You're talking 90% impervious coverage, too, which is, which is excessive, excessive.
So can, you currently live there?
Yes, yes.
And can you just describe the floor plan of the main house?
Like, inside?
The inside.
Sure. You walk in the front door from like a front porch, and there's, the stairs going up to the second floor right there, and then to the right is what, you know, we use as the living room, and then you're kind of right into like the kitchen area after that, and then past that, there's like a little narrow hallway that goes past a full or three-quarter bathroom, I guess they call it, and then straight at the end of that little narrow hallway is like a 10 by 10 office. I've got the exact dimensions, but just like, well, I use it as an office. I think it counts as a bedroom. And then on the second floor, when you come up the stairs, door on the right is one bedroom, then you go a little bit further, like an entryway to the right with a couple of like closets right there, goes right into the full bath, and then if you go back into the hallway, at the end of the hallway is the second bedroom that's upstairs.
So there's two bedrooms and a full bath upstairs?
Yes.
And then closets or whatnot. Is there an attic?
Like a one you can't stand in or anything, but yes.
How big is that second bedroom? I'm just looking at the plan, and I didn't think there was a second bedroom up there.
At the, at the rear of the existing second bedroom?
Yeah.
It's probably about 12 by 14, and the width is 14, yeah, a nice size. So the proposed plan would add an additional bedroom at the rear of it.
So that'll be a third bedroom?
I'm sorry?
That'll be a third bedroom?
Third bedroom upstairs.
It would be a fourth back. It would be a fourth.
Well, he's saying the downstairs is the office.
Yes.
It'd be the third bedroom upstairs, and then there'd be plus the office would be four.
Yeah, I understand the accessory dwelling unit is now a permitted prospect, but I'm having trouble with putting it on this site. I really am, because it's going to be difficult to have all those cars. You're requiring the site plan to have three cars parked there, which is excessive for somebody who's sharing a driveway. I have a hard time with this. It seems a little bit too much to me.
I have to agree with the chairman that the addition of the ADU, as well as the addition, just makes this whole project very big on a small area, and it does seem excessive, and the shared driveway is very concerning since the ADU requires off-street parking, and now you have all this maneuvering going on. So I don't want to speak for the board, but, you know, I would suggest maybe is there a reconfiguration of the application that maybe can put this round peg in a square hole?
The driveway, we have had three cars on our side, but if you have like a guest or something like that, and everything fits, and everybody.
So you're saying there could be more, though, because you're going to have an accessory dwelling unit, which means there are going to be more guests and potentially a tenant. So that just seems like a lot, Mr. Yanosey. It just really seems like a lot.
Do we know if this, like, are you planning on doing an income restriction that would leave the parking at all, or not?
I don't, I'm not sure I understand what that is.
No, you can't talk about income. That's not allowed, J.J.
Well, I do want to ask in the context of the ADU.
No, he can ask. That's relevant. Is the ADU going to be an income restricted ADU?
Oh, like?
Affordable one?
Oh, we hadn't planned on anything like that. I don't know.
So then it wouldn't be?
Thank you. Is it specifically the ADU aspect of it, like, rather than the building itself? Like, if we just had that built?
We can't take a partial vote, right? Like, that would be revealing, like, I don't want to speak out of turn, but.
You would have to make those decisions yourselves. We're just telling you that it seems excessive. Your application seems excessive for your site.
Okay.
Can we just, in sort of the interest of sort of homing in on what we may come back with, it seems that the garage and ADU is sort of the most contentious part of it. Maybe that's the wrong word. Can we sort of pursue the house?
Again, Mr. Wolf, we don't want to steer the applicant in any particular direction. We're just saying that it's a little bit excessive, actually a lot excessive.
Can we get a little more testimony? So the addition on the house?
Yes.
Can you give us some information about what's on the, on that side of the building?
Sure. So would that be sort of on the east side?
I think if it helps, I don't know if the scale comes across in the pictures, but the house is only 1,300 square feet. It's not like a big house that we're trying to make like enormous or anything like that. We're just.
The cantilever actually adds to that space, right? And just because it's a cantilever doesn't mean that it changes the calculations.
For area, right?
For the total surface.
Sure, yeah, right.
So you understand that the cantilever made no difference?
No, all it did was allow us to take advantage of the structure itself, and, which would support, you know, a cantilever for the second floor. It really, it actually, with the paving below it, it didn't impact the coverage, because we would be trading paved, impervious surface for building coverage.
Yeah, the lot has been pretty much entirely paved since before we bought it, like, we bought it that way. It's just, that's the 90% coverage.
Yeah, 90% is a big number.
Right, I meant as far as what is on that side of the house. So there's a, how much of a side yard is there on that side?
So really, there's the driveway side on the west side. The east side is, it's a walkway at best.
Yeah.
Is that one of the photos in your display?
You know, I do have one pointed in the direction of that. We do have, this is the adjacent side yard.
And so is the house next door extend as far back as this house, or does it stop?
Yeah, I think they go a little bit further than we do.
It's the house, not the porch, though.
I think so. I don't know if you have the overhead picture or something, but the two houses on either side of us are large multifamily houses that are much bigger than our house, so they pretty much in every dimension go further than our house. I don't, if we have a photo.
We have some photos that do show that, you know, the three bottom photos here do show the adjacent apartment house.
It could be the porch that goes farther than the house. I'm not sure.
Yeah. I think they have one more.
Oh, you can see the overhead on this page, whatever that is. Yeah, I'm not sure how much that is there, building versus like a rear stairwell that they have on this one. Like, you can see that they go.
So what I'm getting at here is, in order for the board to understand, you know, they've given you some general information about it being too much, so I'm trying to help you out here with what's too much. And generally, when we're talking about a side yard setback issue, sometimes what's too much is, is your encroachment into the side yard setback obstructing light, air, and open space for your neighbor? So where is your neighbor's building in relationship to where you're now extending your side yard setback? Sometimes, you know, that's one of the considerations. Other times, it's, you know, it could be a shading effect. You know, the part of concern might be something that you need to demonstrate as, you know, with the turning movement diagram, you know, does, is there adequate room for the three cars to actually pull a pullout?
And as you mentioned, you could have guests showing up with their cars as well, so it becomes.
Right, but he's only obligated to.
Right, I understand that, yes.
And then, you know, same thing with buildings in the back. You know, you're putting on an addition on that, on that garage to accommodate the ADU, and there are other buildings on your neighbor's properties. Are they, is that additionally, you know, again, affecting the light, air, and open space of those other people's buildings? Are those, are they just garages, or are they occupied?
The side that we're kind of growing toward with the stairs, I think that's just a garage. It's right there, if that helps.
So, so again, this is the type of more detailed information, you know, to help it maybe, again, as part of that understanding if it's a negative impact as opposed to, you know, just having a benefit to yourself by creating this space and additional income for your family. I'm just looking, I mean, so I'm looking at the aerial photograph, the two buildings on either side of his house are really huge.
Right, your house is actually kind of dwarfed by.
Yeah.
It really is.
You know, it comes to the light, air, and space argument. I mean, he's going to fight back.
Yeah, I don't know if it helps, but like, the extension onto the back of the house is just continuing the second floor we already have a little further. Like, it's not like we're going to go higher than the second, it's like kind of like two floors in the front, and then it drops to only one floor in the back, so we would just be building over the back part. That's one floor plus the, I guess, however many feet cantilever that John had drawn in.
But to the board's, you know, concerns, it is a lot on one, you know, they still have to think within the bounds of the property, and it is a lot on one property. This is, this is one of the other things in R2 Zone. This is actually a conforming sized lot for a single-family house. The minimum is 2,500 square feet, not 5,000, and this is a 3,300?
3,300.
Yeah, square foot lot. It actually is more lot area than the minimum. So, you know, it's just one of those unique situations.
I don't believe the city allows for pavers as a pervious condition.
No.
They don't, yeah. I know in some municipalities, we've been able to substitute asphalt for pavers and gain quite a bit of coverage back. I just thought, because we do have all this driveway to consider.
The side that's not driveway is also concrete. If somehow changing that to like dirt or grass or something like that helps address some of the.
We could remove some of the coverage that way.
Now, I was going to bring that up, but I guess this is the appropriate time.
Sure, go right ahead, Jerry.
There is excess impervious coverage that could maybe be cut back. That's costly, because you have to saw cut the concrete. We don't know how thick it is, but almost that whole east side of your property from the quarter to house can be cut back, even all the way back to the garage. And that way, that's grass, that doesn't just help it out a little bit. It's not going to be enough to make a big difference. They're still going to need the variance, but that is something that could help. Can't do anything on the other side, the west side, because they share the driveway with the neighbor. That's really all that can be done on that end. But from what we see where the cars are and where the neighbor parks, I tried to go there a few different times to kind of see what was going on, you know, who goes, who backs up. You must have to shuffle cars from time to time, but there is enough room for the cars in the depth, like, for the three cars to park all beside each other. The difficult issue, not difficult, but the issue I'd be concerned with is backing out, whether you'll be able to get out when they want to. That's something that if approved, they're going to have to work out with their neighbor on how they do that. I don't know how the neighbor parks as well, but I would think one of these three spots is going to go to whoever's going to rent the unit.
I don't know if this helps at all, but, you know, they have a similar dimension parking area over here, and they have three apartments in their building, so they manage to get all their cars in over there, the same way, you know, we would have three over here.
Yeah, I think it can work. I'm not, I just want the board to.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody's willing to go there right now, so, yeah.
And what also helps the application in this case is there's no, there aren't residences across the street.
Right.
It's the lakes there.
Right, the park.
So they also pick up the parking on the curb across the, outside the street, which helps their application. That's just the bonus for them. And while I'm at it, if I could, if approved, both the sidewalk and the walks and the curb are very poor condition, and I think it would be necessary to have those approved if the application gets approved.
And I would just say, I know, you know, we're doing various streets at different times. Maybe they just, you know, make a contribution for their share, and as the city goes through the process of doing the different sections, it'll be into that fund rather than doing themselves.
Whichever is the preference.
I just want to clarify something. When you were talking about removing the concrete, would the cars then park on grass, turning it into a mud pit?
This would be up against the other side of the property by the fence.
Okay, so we're not removing that.
When the cars turn, if you're looking at the site plan of the proposed, it's on the first sheet. It's the middle one. You see how they show the three cars on the back?
Yeah.
So at the head of the car, if they just tape off the concrete, because that's concrete all the way to fence, so if they saw cut that out, they can take all that concrete.
So you're talking a long strip, not a.
It's a long strip, but it's a helpful, it's actually helpful, because the downspouts come down. They're directed away from the house, obviously. There's nowhere for them to go. The ones on the west side are falling as they go to the driveway.
Well, we haven't even gotten to stormwater yet. We're way, way too far from that.
I'm on a roll here.
Take your time, Jerry, but we have not even come close to talking stormwater yet.
But the concrete, reduction of the concrete helps the storm.
I understand that. I understand that, and that is appreciated, that it's something to think about, but I'm at a point where I don't know where to go with this application. And, and that, that is appreciated, that, that is something to think about, but I, I'm at a point where I, I, I don't know where to go with this application. Um, I, I just find it excessive still, and, and I think it needs to be rethought. I really do.
I have to second that, and I'm not sure that just cutting some concrete would be enough.
Is it worth, uh, we haven't talked about the, we proposed a Juliet balcony on the second floor in the front. Is it worth even discussing that? Or like you said, you can't approve like part of the plan anyway, so it's not.
Wouldn't be able to approve part of it, so.
Yeah.
If you wanna hear any more testimony, you can, but it sounds like reconfiguration is probably the best way to go at this stage with regard to submission.
And then we'll just sort of have to walk the tight rope of interpreting, you know, what to come back with. Um, I'd hate for it to be as sort of contentious as, or not contentious, but controversial.
No, this is not contentious, Mr. Wolf.
Of course, I used the wrong word, yeah. But I, I wouldn't wanna come back with something similarly, uh, troubling. Um, I'd wanna come back, you know, with something that, you know, might be a, a bit of a compromise, but that would be, you know, more acceptable. And that we'll have to sort of figure out, I think, where.
I would love to be able to say do this, but that's not my role.
I understand. Yeah, yeah. So we'll, based on sort of the feedback we've heard, um, you know, without sort of letting all our plans go, perhaps, uh, you know, try to make some accommodations and, and address some of the concerns.
You, you understand where we're at though, with the, why we're, we're saying what we're saying.
Yeah.
We, we need to find some other, other ways to reduce the amount of variances and perhaps cut back on some of the setback intrusions.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I can say.
Agreed.
And it's tricky. We have, you know, these existing non-conformities, but, you know, we'll, we'll address them.
I, I know, but everyone wants what they want, right?
That's why we're here, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I came with every intention of, of proving to you guys why this would be, you know, an asset to the neighborhood, a benefit, and not really a detriment to anyone. Um, I, I feel, I still, you know, feel that, that it's not, even sort of with the expansion of the garage, it's very tight back there. But I think we can, you know, reorganize, um, and, and come back. And it's, you know, we'll have to decide, do we pursue the ADU, continue to pursue it? It seems like, um.
Are, are you actually using the garage as a garage or is it just a storage?
Right now, no, uh, I mean, I have like gym equipment and storage stuff in there. I don't, we don't park in there, no. So right now we just park out front.
Yeah, right. Just can't. Too much maneuvering to get a car in and out, obviously.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we never really, really tried that much, because we, in the, the previous house we lived in, like we had the detached garage also and had like gym sites. Immediately I put all my stuff like in the same kind of setting.
It'd be interesting to see, like, show of hands, who has cars in their garages? I mean, with all the beach stuff that we all have, I mean, it's, uh, you know, they're so full. Yeah, nice. I can't seem to find a spot anywhere in any, you know, but, um, yeah, it's, we tend to fill up our garages with stuff, you know. So, yeah, I guess nothing to vote on this evening. Do we pursue the sort of and address the rest of the issues? I mean, does it, I mean, uh, uh, Mr. Beakman, you mentioned, you know, I mean, does it, does it behoove us to sort of person, you know, go through?
I'd probably say we carry to a date certain at this point in time and try to address it more as a, a complete application rather than piecemeal it. So I think that'd be more beneficial to the boards, uh, and what the board is at this point as well. I'll defer to you, but I think that'd be the best ground.
Personally, I think it would be behoove you to give it some more thought and come back with another plan.
Okay.
I would love if we could give them just some specific direction, because they're gonna come back with a full plan and then we're going to go through it piece by piece. We're here, they have a plan. If there's something that's completely egregious that we wanna comment on, that could just help them move forward.
Would be appreciated just to guide us a bit.
Well, and that's why I asked about the garage, because he could eliminate a variance right off the bat by putting the stairs inside the garage and not putting on the side addition or cutting the side addition back by, by one foot.
We're not doing the ADU.
Well, the city really wants ADUs, so I'm not entirely, you know, against encouraging that. And that variance is a very minor one compared to the others.
Yeah, if we have to put the stairs inside, like, we can try to work around it.
Um, the other, the other variances are all related to the expansion of the house? So that's more a question of, um, you know, much, how much excess house can Mr. Yanosi live without? And let the board.
But that's for them to decide, Donna.
Yeah, we're not here to decide that.
Yeah.
That, that's why I said, how much can he decide to live with?
Yeah, I, I guess, I understand your, everybody's position, but I guess what, you know, we were hoping for is, um, we don't wanna waste anybody's time by coming back with like, you know, another wrong, uh, plan. So if something like the cantilever is a major problem, you know, specifically, you know, we can try to do away with that and design around it, but, so I don't know if there's any other way to.
Is there the possibility of, uh, an informal review of some sort? Sometimes we do that.
No, the board's variances are very strictly.
Sure.
Yeah, no negotiating.
So no, uh, consult with zoning or anything? That wouldn't do us any good if we consulted with the zoning officer or anything like that.
I mean, you can talk with Michelle. She's the director of planning and zoning.
Sure.
She does not, you know.
Yeah.
She can't speak for the board.
I just, right, I, I hate to come back with something sort of, you know, um.
And just, and just to elaborate, I have to cut you off too, and, and the whole thing, what the board's position is, as you're probably, you know, seeing here, they just, you know, they can't create your application for you. That's really what it boils down to, where to tell you where to go with regards to that part of direction. So, um, you know, there's been some comments tonight that have definitely given some type of light as to where you should go with your reconfiguration. And it may take a little bit of time to get to where both sides are at a agreeable point. But, yeah, with regards to actually telling you where to go and what's gonna be acceptable, we, we're limited as to.
Are we allowed to bring like multiple options to a meeting and, you know? Okay, so we can't be like, here's A, B, and C, which one works best? Okay.
We're gonna work to sort of.
This isn't the plan board, I'm sorry.
We're gonna try and eliminate as many variants as we can.
That, that's the best approach, or, or reduce the excessiveness of them.
Okay. Yeah. It's a challenging site, as we can all see. You know, I'll, we'll do our best.
And I understand that. And, and it's not our intention to cause your applicant any issues with, with what he wants. We, we just are up here to try to give, uh, the, the neighborhood and your neighbors, um, the due costs that they should have.
Yeah, yeah. And we appreciate that, we do.
Would it help, uh, the neighbor where, where most of the encroachment is and everything? Uh, like I said, it's a multifamily. Uh, would it help if I, you know, I've spoken with the owner of the property a few times. Would it help if I brought him in or anything like that to just? Or is that just not, not something you can comment on?
They, they can come as support for your application, but they don't necessarily tell us how to.
Sure, of course, of course.
They won't be voting on anything.
Yeah.
So would that affect the parking issue? They told, you know, explained the parking issue coming from somebody else?
The, I, I'm not sure what you're saying, Danny.
Okay, they, they share the driveway.
Right. They have a shared driveway.
Okay, so, I mean, what, it's, then there's no problem with you sharing the driveway, correct?
But they have this, but they're allowed.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
No, they're neither, either. But they get, so they share the driveway, so that's not an issue, okay?
Correct.
Yeah.
So that's a good thing. Okay. My suggestion is look at all the bad things and work with them to decrease the amount of bad things. I mean, because what Chairman Avalon is saying, that the magnitude of the application makes it difficult for us to say anything positive right now.
Okay.
So if we can decrease the magnitude of the, what you're doing, it helps you and it helps us, because we have less to look at.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the biggest thing. I'm looking here going, whoa.
Yeah.
You know, and I, I understand the size of the lot. And you're trying to say, how much can I do with this lot? But you can't do as much as you wanna do.
Yeah.
Understand that. That's the one, that's the biggest thing you understand, and I think we can move, okay, or at least we can look at it better.
Okay. And I apologize if we're, if we're looking too big or whatever, you know, this is my first time, uh, going through all this and, you know, John's destroying what we're talking about. So like if, if we went too large with anything, I didn't mean to.
You don't have to apologize.
All right.
Yeah, there's, you know, it's not a wrong thing that you came here wanting all of this. It's, it's our job to kinda guide you without designing it for you.
Right.
And gear you towards something that we hopefully can improve ultimately. We're not here to just have you come here, spend money, and appear and appear and appear and have new forms and new forms. We wanna approve something, but when it's this big, it makes it hard, like Danny's saying and like Chris is saying.
Yeah.
So there's no need for an apology at all.
Well, I think we have a goal, and that is to sort of, yeah, reduce, you know, these, uh, what we're requesting, sort of the, the variances we're looking for. You know, hopefully without too much impact on the design. So we carry?
Um, it seems like the best approach, Mr. Wolf.
Okay.
Do you have any available dates?
Um, we are looking at November eighteenth at this point. November eighteenth is open and December ninth is open.
I think if it works for John, I'd like to see that soon as.
So it's November eighteenth, we would need everything in our office by October twenty-first.
Okay.
And, uh, does that require any of like the notification stuff or anything we're, we're sending in?
You're, um, you're waiving another notice. And, um, just briefly to backtrack, we accept a jurisdiction over the matter. I don't think it was noted in the beginning, uh, to hear the matter, right? Was that noted?
I didn't hear any.
Jurisdiction, did we, um, I.
Did you review the notices?
Yeah, everything was fine, so I just wanted to make sure that we noted that.
Right. Right. So we have jurisdiction. Um, the only thing we ask for, um, Mr. Yanosi, is for you to waive the time for the application.
Sure.
To be completed, completely heard.
We'll, we'll make sure that's done.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're gonna be, be beyond the, the initial.
Exactly. Yeah. There's a certain amount of days that we have to hear your application.
Okay.
We will coordinate with your office, yeah, to get that done.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion to carry, uh, six-ten Fifth Avenue to November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, without further notice.
I'll sec, I'll second. This one I'm allowed to do.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Natalie Passerini?
Yes.
John Hall?
Yes.
Chairman Avaloni?
Yes. And I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.